So for December 5th of 2022, we will begin this evening's meeting with the offering of the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice President Toy. Please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Toy.
Thank you.
This is a study meeting. No votes will be taken this evening, although several motions may be offered that will carry through to the next regular meeting, which is set for December 14th of 2022. We have all members of the council present this evening. We will now go to audience communication. We set aside 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for audience members to address issues that are not on the agenda this evening. We will reset our game clock here to three minutes.
I'm not promising I'll be under that three-minute thing, but...
It's kind of like never-ending overtime.
As long as I don't get a penalty for roughing or something.
Good evening, sir. Your name and address, please.
Christopher Martin. I'm a Michigan resident. Years ago, when I used to attend these meetings on a regular basis, and at that time, communication and transparency was key words that were stated by many council members. And I watched communication be divided into half. By that, I mean there was a time when I could stand here and speak under the first audience communication and the second audience communication. Well, they thought that was evidently too much communication, and so therefore they cut that in half. As far as the transparency, nothing much has changed on that, and I'll give two pretty good examples. On the roof that was going to go over on the Sandberg Library on Seven Mile, Mr. Donavich said it's going to be substantial, I think was the term he used, sizable or substantial. Never said, none of you voted on it to replace the roof over there, but never gave the price on the thing. And I found that to be somewhat unusual. As far as the latest contracts with city workers and non-city workers, I watched a young lady stand over there. First thing that she said, from the third floor, first thing that she said was that the Martin Luther King Day was going to be a holiday. That was it. Mentioned nothing about any COLA, any wage increases whatsoever. Something about flex time, but never mentioned anything about if that was weekly or how many hours a month, whatever. That was approved by, recommended approval by Laura Toy. Once again, nothing was mentioned on that. In the latest Connections magazine here, it states here that Martin Luther King Jr. Day, city offices open. So if that's a day off, are we paying people triple time or whatever to be there, or was this a printing error? Because that was one of the benefits, Martin Luther King Day. If anybody knows anything about that, I'd be interested to hear it. So, no one. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any other audience communication? Any council communication? Mr. Barr, you have the floor.
Just briefly, Mr. Martin asked about the cost of the library. I actually specifically remember us mentioning that, and if I recall correctly, it's $243,000. I know that number was mentioned, so I'm sorry if you missed it. Second thing, I'll just say as a general thing, you know, the number of the questions that you asked, if, I mean, part of what our job is on City Council is representatives of the community, just to put in the hours studying for these meetings to look into the details. If we talked through every single detail of every one of these proposals, these meetings would never get done. That being said, if we ever fail to ask a question that ought to be asked, that's why we offer audience communication after every item. So, and often residents raise good questions for us. Finally, as far as the, what I assume was a mistake in the Connections message, I think I saw Communications Director pulling out his pen when you said that, and so I think that message has been heard, and I trust it was an oversight. So, thanks.
What is it?
Mr. Martin, I'll also add, for the first time recently in the last couple of years, you have available to you before and during the meetings, the same packet of information that we have as council members. And so I think that's quite a bit more transparent than what was available before. So you can see exactly what we see. Nothing at all is hidden from you. Anybody else on the council? Ms. Toy?
Ms. Chair, thank you. You know, as we all grow older and live in this community for a number of years, we see the passing of a lot of good people. And one such person was the other owner of Mama Mia's Restaurant, and I'm going to destroy her last name. I'm going to ask Scott to help me with that.
Vardunionis, maybe?
Vardunionis Catherine, any of you that knew and go to Mama Mia's. Catherine passed, and she'll be at Charlie Step Funeral Home, and you can get details from there. But she was a very dear person. Mama Mia's has been around forever. I'll tell you a quick funny story. My good friend Lorraine Conley, the police family, they live right across here from City Hall, just by Lovelone there. And her dad came into the City Council back in the 50s, and he said, "I want to put in a pizzeria." And the City Council said to him, "Now, listen," this was like mid-50s, "we already have one pizzeria in Lovonia. One is enough. We're not going to grant you the second one." And Mama Mia's was the first pizzeria. So Catherine and her family didn't own it then, but they bought it some years later. And it's with great sadness that we recognize that family and wish them our deepest sympathy. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You remember that meeting like it was yesterday?
Yes, I do. Yes, sir.
Any other council communication? I see none. We'll get to the agenda. Thank you for waiting. Item number one, a waiver petition from the Planning Commission, petition 2022100220, submitted by The Manik and Smith Group, Inc., requesting to redevelop the site, including demolishing the existing commercial building and constructing a new automated auto-wash facility, a clean express at 2033 and 20340, excuse me, 20330 and 20340 Farmington Road, located on the east side of Farmington Road between Norfolk and Eight Mile Road in the northwest quarter of Section 3. Notification has been sent to Kyle Rentmore of The Manik and Smith Group and Dennis Miller, DMC Real Estate Advisors. You are the petitioners here. Please come up to the podium. I'll ask our Economic Development Director, Mr. Toramina, to give us a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a request for an automated car wash establishment. It's on the east side of Farmington Road, just south of Eight Mile. This is the former Napa Auto Parts store. You can see from the map, the zoning is C2 General Business. This property has roughly 166 feet of frontage on Farmington Road, one acre of developable land. There's an existing building down the property. It's about 5,400 square feet. That would be removed and replaced with a new car wash building. The new car wash building would be located on the north side of the property, whereas the current building is located near the middle of the property. Access is currently provided by two driveways, one on the north side of the site, the other on the south side. Both of those driveways would remain. Line immediately to the north is a chiropractic office. To the south is Bad Brad's Barbecue, and to the east is a small parking lot that is actually affiliated with the property to the north. And then further to the east of that are single-family homes that are located on Shady Side. The new car wash would be about 1,000, excuse me, 3,670 square feet. You can see from the site plan that there would be two lanes that would service the car wash. Cars would queue before paying and entering the car wash facility. Each lane would have the ability to accommodate roughly nine vehicles. There would be two kiosks with digital menu boards, overhead canopies. Those two lanes, as they merge here, just before entering the car wash, they merge into a single lane. There is an escape lane for vehicles that decide not to enter the car wash. As vehicles exit the facility, this would be a one-way driveway leading out, so vehicles would have the option of turning onto Farmington Road. Alternatively, they could turn left, go back to the south driveway, which is, provides both ingress and egress to the site, or they could circle back and go into this parking lot area. The parking lot provides for 21 parking spaces, each of which would be equipped with a vacuum. The equipment in there would include waste receptacles as well as the vacuum and other tools associated with the vacuum process. The building complies with all required yard regulations. If we look at the floor plan, it's quite simple. The north half of the building consists of the car wash bay itself, and then the south half includes all the mechanical equipment associated with the car wash operation, restrooms as well as an office. Plans were provided, fully detailed landscape plans. This is something the Planning Commission took a look at. Additional landscaping was provided along the north and the east property lines. We do feel that there's still room for improvement along the south property line, where this property abuts the restaurant and the outdoor seating that is part of that restaurant. So there is some concern relative to the noise associated with this operation, and we find that some additional buffering should be provided in that area. Plan meets the parking requirement. The structure itself would contain two primary materials. That would be masonry as well as fiber cement siding. The masonry product in this case is the beige and the darker beige or gray located at the bottom of the building. The Nihihi panels are the composite material is the brown shown here. So really just the two materials. The other issue that the Planning Commission looked at was site lighting. The photometric plan that was submitted with the application does show a slightly greater-than-average illumination level as specified under Section 7.22 of the zoning ordinance, so that's something that will still need to be adjusted. In terms of hours of operation, the petitioner indicates that it would be from Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and Sunday, Sunday, excuse me, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. However, we were told that the vacuum service would be free and would remain available after hours. This is of some concern relative to the lighting. The Planning Commission resolution does require that the lights either be turned off or dimmed after hours, but we should probably clarify what time those lights would have to be brought down or turned off. Sinage was the only other issue. They are showing excessive signage. That's something that would have to be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. It would be in the form of the wall signs. I think there are two wall signs, more than what the ordinance allows. The petitioner is willing to work with the city to reduce the amount of signage. And then lastly, with respect to special requirement of the ordinance that prohibits car wash facilities from locating 150 feet from any church, school, or playground, there are no churches, schools, or playgrounds within 150 feet. So that aspect of the ordinance is being complied with. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Two things. One is through the chair to the city attorney, any ideas why the stipulation on distancing from schools, churches, and playgrounds?
No idea. Why it's that way in the ordinance? Honestly, I don't know. I could ask Mr. Fisher.
I think it would be interesting to know if this is some leftover, right, you know?
There are unfortunately several things that are leftovers.
Yep. But that would be, I'd appreciate, you know, knowing if this is right, if there's a reason. Mark, it said that the stormwater detention retention is not flushed out yet, correct? Is that still the case?
No details have been provided on stormwater management. It would have to be provided underground. The question here is where that ultimate outlet is going to be, if it's a county system along Farmington Road, or if it's going to go to the east to another system. But that's something that'll have to be designed by the engineer.
All right. I'm not going to be comfortable voting for the, and I want to thank the petitioner and thank your office, Mark, and the planning, the Planning Commission for really, as always, right, very detailed, exhaustive, comprehensive plan, very helpful. But I wouldn't be comfortable voting to support this until we know what the wastewater management is. It's not that I can look at it and say that's good or bad, but it gives us opportunities to ask some questions based on things we've learned about that. The other question, and through the chair, and maybe this goes to Mr. Zalinsik, the water, concerns about water pressure. I've had questions from some residents and businesses about, you know, where this is relative to, what do you call it, a pumping station? Is that what you call it?
PRV, probably pressure-reducing valve, or near the nearest station. But to the chair, just, I would assume that OHM has a model. We can work with them to figure out if there's any issues. I think there's a 12-inch when Bad Brad's was constructed that he tapped into. I don't believe there would be an issue, but as you know, we've been spending a lot of investment into our water system through replacements and improvements, whatever, continue to do that. So I would not hesitate to check with our consultant, but I would say there's probably going to be an issue with the water pressure there.
Okay. I would like to have an affirmative answer from our consultant on that, and that's helpful, Todd. I appreciate that. And one other question, proximity of this to Eight Mile Road, are we concerned about, not ingress so much, but egress onto southbound Farmington Road? You know, in other words, people turning left at what is a busy intersection? Maybe that's a question for, you know, Mark. I don't know if there's any discussion.
There's been no traffic studies associated with the proposal. Whether that would, it does not appear to be any conflicts in turning movement, conflicts from the site. And so no, that's something that the petitioner could address through some type of traffic analysis in terms of what the gap analysis would show there.
And I'm not looking to create any undue burden on the petitioner, but that is probably one of our busiest intersections, Eight Mile and Farmington, or among the busiest. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Donavich has the floor. Then Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, the petitioners for being here. I'm pretty excited about this because that store has been sitting vacant for a while now. It really needs some attention. If I understand correctly, again, you're knocking the structure down and rebuilding brand-new, which is awesome. We're going to have a brand-new building. I think my colleague, Kathy McEntire, was spot-on with asking questions about water runoff. That was one of my questions, is, you know, not so much the stormwater, but as the water from the actual car wash. With that being said, that is going to be taken care of by the engineers because it's a brand-new building, and you're going to be digging large holes in the ground, and engineering, OHM, Wayne County, and the city engineer are going to be on top of you and making sure that whatever water is going to be wasted there is going to be dispensed appropriately. In terms of traffic, I've received some emails about traffic, and that's, of course, it's important. I mean, we talk about businesses, we talk about traffic. But again, we can't stop progress. We can't stop brand-new buildings from being built and new businesses to offer to our residents because of traffic. We live in a densely populated community. We're going to get traffic. Businesses come to Lovonia because it's a great community. So naturally, I'd much rather prefer traffic than a vacant building that attracts crime, than a vacant building that attracts lesser property values, a vacant building that just looks bad. So I'm pretty excited about this. I am worried about the noise. I know there is homes to the east, so I'd like to know from the petitioner what you guys plan on doing to buffer that. I mean, I know there's a bunch of trees behind here. It's my hope that you don't tear those trees down, or I understand you have to tear some trees down, but I'd like to hear from the petitioner what your plan is to not tear as many trees down as possible, and then to buffer sound to those homes to the east. And then I think Mr. Toramina made a point as well of buffering to the south right there, making sure being good neighbors with Bad Brad's. It's a beautiful new restaurant that was just built, and I want to make sure those patrons there don't have to listen to loud vacuums and whatnot. So, of course, it's par for the course, but, you know, what you're doing to minimize the noise pollution to the south and to the east.
Can I address that?
If that's appropriate.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick DeSemplar. I work for Manik and Smith Group. I represent Express Wash Concepts. Dennis Miller here is a broker for Express Wash Concepts. On behalf of both of us, we appreciate your time late this evening, specifically to address that question regarding the noise. There is, at the exit, which would be on the north side of the property there, I'll make sure I'm saying that right. No, actually, I misspoke there. So the exit actually is at the, on the roadside of that property. So that's where the loud blow-drying system is for the vehicles, so it's facing the right-of-way. Now, at that, right inside the building there, which is where it's located, it's at about, according to our cut sheets for that, it's at about 95 decibels of noise. Now, once you get outside the building, that's down to about 60 decibels of noise. Now, for reference, your average city street is probably in the range of 60 to 75 decibels to noise. So, once you get outside that building facing the right-of-way, you'll be at about the same noise level from the street itself. In addition to that, we do provide landscaping right up against the building exit there to help muffle that specifically, further dampen noise. Another thing that was mentioned regarding landscaping was landscaping on the south property line. In our original submission, we had trees only along the south property line. At the request of the Planning Commission, we are planning to provide shrubs also in between those trees. And we actually sent that over just this morning to Scott Miller, so I'm sure it didn't get to you guys. But we are planning to enhance the landscaping on the south property line because of the shared property line with Bad Brad's. In regards to some of the other items that were brought up, vacuum timing was one item. We are, we would propose that the vacuums would shut off upon the car wash closing at 8:00 p.m. on weeknights. Vehicles that are in the queue line at 8:00 p.m. still get through the wash, so by 8:30 or so, the vacuums would be off. Regarding lighting, we would propose that parking lot lighting would shut off by 10:30 p.m. I believe that would be, do you know, Dennis, would those be like automatic sensors? So that would be 10:30 during the summer would be when those would go off. Like, on a day like today, obviously, they'd be off before then, though they'd stay on till close of business. Wall lights would remain on throughout the night, which would be the lights on the building, and signs would remain illuminated throughout the night. But parking lot lighting would shut off after close of business. Regarding the signage on site, as Mr. Toramina discussed, we are willing to work with the engineering department and planning department to come in compliance on all sign regulations. Stormwater detention was another item that was brought up. We certainly plan to provide the required stormwater detention for the site. That is not part of this stage yet, per the planning department's set of guidelines for development, that it's during engineering the way it's laid out now, and we certainly plan to fully comply with all requirements. I'm sure we will not receive approval unless we do. So, that's certainly, as Mr. Toramina mentioned, that would most likely be underground detention. For a site of this size, it almost certainly will be. Water pressure was another item that was mentioned, and we certainly are willing to work with the city and their consultant engineer and provide water pressures and demands to identify whether or not there could be a potential issue there. As indicated by the engineering director here, we also don't anticipate an issue given the size of the domain, of the water main and our demand pressures. I'd also like to point out that we do have water reuse tanks, three of them located next to the building, that do reduce water demand as we're able to reuse and clean a portion of our water. Regarding some of the traffic items, it is certainly a busy road, and I would say that an important thing to note about this type of establishment is, the reason we want to build there is because it's a busy road. We're not looking to attract more traffic there, but instead, we look to capitalize on the fact that there is traffic there. And so we consider car washes to be passerby establishments. In other words, the majority of the people who come to our site are people who are traveling down those roads, or shopping, or living in the near vicinity of the site. If you look at uses of nearby properties, they're quite similar in use. There's pharmacy, credit union, gas station, salon. Once you get onto Eight Mile, there's grocery store, additional gas stations. These are all what we call high-intensity uses, which are people coming in and out quite frequently. We feel that a car wash fits in well with the adjacent use of land in this area.
If you don't mind, let me just stop you right there real quick. We've got a couple other council members who want to speak, maybe ask you specific questions.
Absolutely.
Mr. President, I had a follow-up that he didn't really touch on, is the trees to the east with the residential homes. You could touch on that.
Existing trees are planned to remain back there as much as, and could you possibly go back to the landscaping plan there? So the lighter-colored trees down there are all existing trees that are planned to remain, and then we plan to plant additional trees along the north part of the east property line.
Okay, so you don't plan on disrupting the trees to still give adequate buffer between the homes to the east?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Toy, and then Ms. McEntire.
Thank you, if I may. Comments to the petitioner as well. Want to thank you for, you know, coming in and choosing Lovonia. I'd rather see this on Eight Mile, to tell you the truth, but so be it. You have an empty building there. I get it. I get the traffic. I go to the doctor's office right there at good old U of M across the street. Have you done any others of these? Because I'm, the reason I ask that too, sir, is I'm seeing those bright colored from Star Wars, those things that stick out. I'm old-school, so you'll have to give me what it comes at. Yeah. Lifesavers, what?
Not lifesavers. Not lifesavers, light sabers.
Well, okay, light sabers. Are those the vacuum cleaners? Is that what that is?
That's right.
Why do they have to be bright green like that?
I don't have an answer for that.
Because they're on the good side of the force.
Oh, they're on the good side. If they were bad, they'd be red.
Spurting colors.
Spurting colors, oh dear. Anyhow, okay, I just wondered, I had to ask that question. Was there a reason for it at all? I mean, my colleagues did have some pretty cute ones, but...
I can get back to you on that. I'd have to talk to the architect of the site. I will say that in some communities, they will force us to, they don't want those facing the street. So this is advantageous on this site that the vacuums aren't facing the street.
Yeah, well, I'm more concerned about that color of those things, sir. Okay, that's all right. And when you pull out, I think Councilwoman McEntire alluded to this, even when you go to the gas station down on Middle Belt Road, there's like runoff water off your car, unless you've got somebody, you know, towel drying it, because their dryer doesn't always real sufficient to get your water off. And that water ends up on that road. I mean, on Middle Belt all the time, and in the winter, it gets to be pretty much of a buildup, sir. I just wondered how you're going to address that. Do you have any drains going in or whatever at the end there as they come through it? I know that sounds kind of trivial, but it does happen.
No, it's a great question, and it's a question we get a lot. We have heated, 50 feet of heated pavement at the exit of the car wash, and all of our onsite stormwater runoff will have to be collected and conveyed to our underground detention system, as is almost certainly required by the city engineering standards.
Okay. And where else have you done some of these?
We haven't built any in Michigan yet. We're looking at several locations in Michigan. The company is based in Penn, or Ohio, and they have locations, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Indiana. Dennis, do you know? How many? Maryland, how many?
And you know Michigan beat all three of those teams you just named. Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. Sorry for the humor, but...
That's why we're coming here.
We'll go to Ms. McEntire.
And I'm sorry if I missed this in your presentation or in the notes, and my notes are having a hard time loading after page seven in the packet. Are you a subscription-based business?
Monthly subscription.
Monthly, but you can also buy individual washes, right? But the story is, a subscription's a much better deal, right?
Monthly deals, many times as you want.
Yep. Your water reclamation system, is what you use considered state-of-the-art?
Absolutely. It is. You can spell that out there.
I actually, I don't have a lot of details on that, Dennis, so...
I think, would you like the other gentleman come to the podium?
If you have information that's applicable to the presentation and the questions being asked, please come up to the podium, identify yourself, and...
All right, Dennis Miller, DMC Real Estate Advisors, and it's all state-of-the-art, all the equipment. We got, just to give you a little background, we got 80 washes that are open across the country, I guess half the country. And they're all company-operated too. They're not franchised, so it will be a company presence, so they tend to operate a lot better than the onesy-twosies, you know, in the franchise groups. But aggressive company, really, you know, local charity. They do a, we do a grand opening here, we'll have a charity event and donate money to the, you know, local charities and such. And so we're community-oriented. And so, we're community-orientated. And you can see the landscape, and we do a really, really nice job. Not like the old dingy car washes of the past.
Right. Keep the Livonia Community Foundation in mind on that charity event. But, I, I, and I'm just, I'm just kidding, I'm on the board. I, I appreciate that, I appreciate knowing that it's a company.
Yes.
That it's a company-owned and operated business. And just one other comment, you said you have heated, right? As the, the egress from the wash is heated.
Right.
And I also assume based on going through different car washes, if you have a good, the, the better your drying system, the less water you have coming off the vehicles that exits. So, I assume again, what you have is state-of-the-art.
Drying system, there's not a lot of water left. You don't have to get out of the car and start, you know, wiping it down or anything. It's, it's a really good system.
Okay, I, the, the only concerns I have are about knowing exactly what the stormwater management will be and then hearing from our consultant that there's, that they've looked at and have no concerns with the water pressure. Thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Has there been a motion? Just a, through the, through the chair to the petitioner, just got a few questions. I appreciate all the answers that you have had in place with the decibels. We did, obviously, looking through the packet, have some residents that were concerned, obviously, with the operation. And maybe this is through the chair to Mr. Tormina. That parking lot that you said, now, this is on the east buffer, correct? There's that, there's that kind of the goofy parking lot to the east, that, that east property, right there. That's, and that's someone else's property?
That is correct. That is associated with the business to the north.
And that's the one that, in theory, it butts up to the closest residential?
That is correct. The closest residential is right here.
Perfect, okay. Thank you for that. And then, the second thing I was going to ask through the, through the chair to the petitioner is, I noticed that we had the junipers and the ginkgos that are budding up to that property. Would you happen to know what size you're planting those? That's the one that's budding up right to the eastern residential side? I think the plan's awesome, I do. I think it's going to be a good amenity. I know that your stormwater management, I, I know the special inspections that you guys are going to go through, and the engineering docs should, should cover most of the utility and infrastructure questions. I just want to make sure we're being good stewards to our neighbors to the east.
Are you looking for height specifically?
Yeah, you know what? And, and for this, just to make matters, I mean, if you could find that information out for the regular, I'm going to go ahead and offer an approving with the caveat that I would like the vacuums to be in sequence with the hours of operation. And what was lighting that we wanted? Was the lighting going to be operation as well?
We had proposed to have, I believe, they'd be automatic lights, dawn to dusk, so they would...
That sounds great. Now, would you keep, you would keep building wall packs on for security purposes?
Yes, sir.
So, let's add that in as well, if that's, if that's good. So, I'll offer an approving for regular with those two stipulations.
Could, could we also include the other?
Yes.
The other stormwater management? And water pressure?
Those are the questions, those are the answers you're going to provide us by the regular. In, including the heights of those junipers and ginkgos.
We will be able to provide water pressure if he's able to provide us water pressure by then.
It's on top, then.
Okay, so, I'm going to, we have a, an approving with those stipulations on, on, on the floor here. We do have some residents that are present as well.
Can I repeat of what the stipulations were? Oh, that's too much.
We got two of them.
All right, so, there's an approving for regular. We're going to be asking for a few answers. Now, the stipulations include the lighting for dusk to dawn and the vacuums for business hours. And I think, let's specify, the business hours is, the latest is eight P. M.?
Vehicles that are in the queue at eight P. M. still go through. So, that could be as late as eight-thirty before the vacuum shut off.
Then, why don't we just make it easy and say eight-thirty? And obviously, this is just...
So, the business closes at eight, vacuums are off at eight-thirty?
And obviously, this is just the regular. We're going to be, obviously, rendering our final decisions based on us receiving those answers as well to the questions.
Okay. I know we have residents, President, please, I want to give you, you're an opportunity to speak as to this matter. Good evening, please, tell me your name and address. You have two minutes, okay?
Eva Kimjerska on Mayfield. The first question is, why do we need a car wash? We already have two within a mile of, of, of this location. And we believe it's not compatible with the area, which is a professional area, medical, that lovely new restaurant, and nice shops. And we're very happy about the restaurant. And secondly, all these things have been addressed, but I just want to represent all the people on Nextdoor, who we petitioned and we went around the neighborhood and talked to, and the effect on the environment, which you have addressed and you're going to address. But, I'm very green and I want to see that water recycled. I don't want to see it in our storm sewers. So, that was that. Then, the effect on the sewer system. By the way, how old is our sewer system on Farmington? Because that always worries me. Coming from London, where the sewer system's over two-hundred years old and it breaks all the time, I don't want to see that happening here. Again, the water pressure, we're concerned about water pressure because already on Shadyside, we have very low pressure. I don't have great pressure on Mayfield, which is two streets away. So, you know, that has to be addressed. Then, the, the, the back of that property, that's on to Shadyside. And there are houses there, there are children in that area. They'll be curious, they'll want, they'll want to be coming out there. So, we're concerned about that, about the amount of cars going through. And I think that about covers it, unless my colleague has something to remind me about. No. So, we just don't think it fits in that, in that part of, of, of Farmington. I love the Napa store, I'm a car addict, I have antique vehicles, I fix my own car. I was in there all the time, and I really, really miss it. So, I'd much rather see something else professional in that space. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we did get a lot of replies on Nextdoor, which I'm hoping you guys did see. And people were supposed to write in to Sarah and give you all that information.
We did receive some communication, we have new data on this from...
Okay, right, thank you.
At least one resident. I'm, I'm sure we received others. Does anybody else want to address the council in regards to this? Okay.
Ron Urban, Shadyside.
Okay, you have two minutes, we're going to reset the shot clock here.
All right, how about for right now, we go back to old school?
Sorry.
Old school is I do it on my phone and I let, I let, you know, when you've, I just kind of signal when you've got like fifteen seconds.
Done. Yeah, I'm Ron Urban from Shadyside. And as far as the traffic, a lot of the traffic is, goes down my street because they want to cut the corner for the, for the light. So, between that and the water pressure, my neighbor had the city come out because he couldn't get his water pressure to run his sprinkler system, which told me that, don't bother putting a sprinkler system in because there's not enough water pressure, which I didn't, because he found the smallest one and he could only run two or three heads per zone. And, and so, as far, and he was told that we can't do anything about it because you are at the end of the line. The water comes from Seven Mile Road and Merriman and goes through all our neighbor. And, and then, once you cross Eight Mile Road, that's a different. And so, as far as the water pressure system, that's something I'm going to have to live with the rest of, if you, you know, he's just going, that's an ongoing tap. It's just going to be going and going and going, which is going to lower mine, even lower than it already is. So, and that's something I will have to live with as long as I live there. And as far as the shrubbery and stuff like that, the council ought to say that you have to maintain the shrubbery and, and the, as long as that business is there. Because, okay, I'm too much?
No, 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 you're, I'm, I'm just nodding, I'm just nodding along with you.
Because that Eight Mile Road and the Horton, that shrubbery that was supposed to block all the, the lights and stuff like that going into that residence, as they die, they're not being replaced. So, that should be, that should be maintained. If you, if you have a business there and the shrubbery's supposed to be there at the beginning, it should be there until you close the building. And as far as that building, that just closed. That building wasn't, it was inoperable within weeks.
That's times.
Okay.
Anytime...
I think he was thinking of Kmart, which is...
Anytime that we have site plans that are approved with shrubbery and the whatnot, they're expected to be maintained. I know sometimes they aren't, I know, but that's the expectation and that's a city inspection issue that we need to follow up on. We have somebody from the administration here who can take a note of that. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have a question. So, clearly, there are some concerns in regards to water pressure. So, I'll, I'll direct this to the petitioner and also Mr. Zalinsik. Is it possible within industry standards to, like, run water in off-peak hours and store it in the building as to not affect pressure during daylight hours or operational hours?
To the chair, you might have to put a booster. If the pressure, which I, I don't believe is going to be a problem, is a twelve-inch line through there, they may have to put a booster pump at their own property for the pri, you know, private connection they may do to help their facility out or reclamation of the water. But, you know, we'll make sure when, one of the processes, we'll have to probably test the hydrants, check the flow with the fire department, confirm what the flow is. We can give you an estimated flow through that area, but then they'll do the flow test with the hydrants in that area to confirm what we're getting on the model equates to that. But, they may have to in their own preview, update or add booster pumps to this, up to that facility necessarily at their own cost, if they want to make it viable.
Sounds good. Okay, is anybody else in the audience wanting to address this? I see none, Mr. McCullough?
Just one thing through the chair to Mr. Zalinsik. Is it possible, you know, the resident brought up a good point about the pressure and sprinkler zones. Is it, is that something we can get a record upon on the current pressure that they have on their street?
I had to talk to the water supervisor. Some homes that were built may have a half-inch line, they may, they want to upgrade to a one-inch line. All depends, you know, a lot of them are five-eight, so it just depends on the, a house and what they...
Is it possible to reach out just so that we can get some information on these neighbors?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Toy?
Thank you, I'm going to offer also, forgive me colleagues, but I'm going to offer also a denying resolution as well, just so we have some options.
Okay. So, we have, there's no votes tonight. We have an approving with the circumstances that you heard, the stipulations. We have a denying. You have an opportunity to provide us any additional information that has been requested before we meet again on, I believe it's going to be December fourteenth. And send that to us, you know, in enough time. We'll vote on it that night, and it could either be approved or denied, but you've heard the comments here tonight, okay?
Should information be sent to Mr. Tormina's office?
Please send it to citycouncil@livonia.gov and Mr. Tormina. So, we both, I'm sure he would forward it on, but, yeah, actually, just send it to both if you can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That's item number one, we'll go to item number two. A word of bid from Community Resources for Printing. The City of Livonia has twenty-twenty-three Connections Magazine with an optional one-year extension from budgeted funds. Good evening, Mr. Sabo.
Hi, good evening, Council, Josh Sabo from Community Resources. Asking council to approve a, one year, as Council President Jolly said, with an option for a second year contract with Hearst Printing, who is the current magazine printer. We went out for bid for this project, there were three responses to that, and Hearst is the lowest by, it looks like just under seventeen thousand dollars. Happy to answer any questions that folks have.
Mr. Barr?
Reviewed the proposals, everything looks to be in order. Had no problem offering approval for consent if there's no objection.
Okay. Mr. Donavick?
Thank you, Mr. President, thanks, Mr. Sabo, for being here tonight. Can you remind us, I know there was some talk about consolidating magazines. So, this is the one city magazine now that we send out?
Correct, yes. I mean, and some folks might get confused that there is a newsletter that comes out of the senior center. That's something that the senior center staff handle. And I think, as far as I know, it's printed in-house, that might not be the case, but definitely that content, content is handled by the senior center.
And can you explain how elected officials use the magazine? Because oftentimes, I see our mayor has a nice piece on there, it's beautiful, I love it. But, oftentimes, I know there's not a spot in there for city council. Are elected officials purchasing certain portions of magazine from their own money? Or is that money coming out of city funds? How does that work in terms of advertising?
In terms of that, as far as I understand it, when the, when I started working with the magazine, there was a message from the mayor in the front of it then, and that we've just continued with that. If there are council members that have suggestions or ideas for content, we'd be, you know, happy to entertain those.
Yeah, totally appropriate, I think it's a great idea. I love the fact that the mayor's reaching out and, you know, it's a, just shows why the magazine's valuable, right? Here's your mayor talking to you. But, I think it would be nice if the mayor has one, maybe the clerk has one, so she can update on election stuff during election time. Or council members have one to update people on different ordinances or what's going on in council. I think it's really important that that magazine continues to be as strong as it is. I love it, I, I get it, and, and it's great. I just want some better clarification on how our city electives can utilize that magazine to reach out to residents that may not have access to social media, may not have internet capabilities, or, or just maybe, you know, that's their only way of getting news and information from our city. Be awesome to have that connection as it is a Connections Magazine to connect to our residents. Thanks, Mr. Sabo.
And if I can, oh, sorry, please.
No, if you want, would you like Josh to answer?
Yeah, please finish answering the question, and then I was asking Ms. McIntyre if she wanted the floor afterwards.
Oh, okay. But, yeah, we would obviously be happy to entertain, you know, any of those conversations, for sure.
There are, there are actually two magazines. I understand only one comes out of your office. There's Livonia Today.
Which is privately printed.
But, what's the city's relationship with that, Josh? Because to Rob's point, the mayor has a column there with whatever picture she chooses. Do you guys pay for that? Because...
No, they, they request our input on content and...
So, I, I know, I know that business model is it's paid for by the businesses. You pay to subscribe, I'm familiar with that.
And they sell advertisements within it, yeah.
Okay.
As far as I understand it, I, I don't, outside of they kind of...
No, I understand, it's not, it's not within your, it's not within your, your purview. When we're done with this, I'd, I'd like to ask Mr. Sabo another question, not related to this.
Well, we have an approving on the floor after consent from Mr. Barr.
I don't have anything else on that.
I know, I, yeah, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Josh, I just wanted to ask you, and I, I think I copied you on an email, maybe to Dave Varga. The, the parade spectators and the people there for the holiday lighting, it was significantly smaller crowds than, last year was an anomaly because it was raining. And I just would like to ask you to think about, you know, I don't know if it was lack of knowledge. I, I don't know what it was, but it, it was really disappointing to me. The parade's wonderful, everybody loves it, it's a great community event. It takes a lot of, as you know, as well as anybody, and Ted and Doug Moore and Don and, it takes tremendous amount of resources and, and money. And then, to see, you know, something that was, I would call it somewhat sparsely attended. So, maybe, you know, and, and in the future, get back to us. And I may put this into committee, I, I love the parade, but it was disappointing.
Yeah, I would be happy to have that conversation.
Thank you very much.
Can I, can I add just one more thing real quickly on the magazine? With the question that came about Martin Luther King Junior Day, with the way that the timeline works for us producing the magazine, this issue would have gone to print before that was approved, or I think even the union negotiations had concluded on that. So, that wasn't something that we would have, it's not something that we didn't catch, it just hadn't happened yet, so. By the time we went to print, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabo. Well, I'll, I'll go out to the audience, does the audience have any comments on item number two? I see none. Item number three is a request for authorization to purchase two M-fourty-eight-hundred WatchGuard firewalls from Department of Information Systems for use in the city hall data center from budgeted funds. Casey?
Evening. Casey O'Neil, Information Systems Director. The Information Systems Department is requesting an approval to purchase and upgrade to our main city firewall. This firewall is a critical component of our network infrastructure, providing secure access to the internet and routing on our network. Our current firewall is near the end of life and can no longer be updated. This replacement we're proposing is a WatchGuard M-fourty-eight-hundred with high availability. And that means in the event of a failure, it can immediately roll over to a second unit, keeping our network operational. We have several similar WatchGuards throughout the various city buildings that work together, and we have a lot of knowledge and trust in this brand. Our network consultant, Centaurus, is currently offering a promotional discount for this item, bringing a total to forty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and forty-eight cents. And these funds are budgeted in the twenty-twenty-three budget. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you. I'm going to ask for an approving because it's a lot cheaper than buying a fire truck or anything else.